Well, um, it's seven o'clock, so we're gonna start our April meeting of the Simsbury Zoning Commission. And uh, our first order is to take a look at attendance and uh, see if we need any alternates to sit in. Is anybody?
You do not.
Isn't this just a discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Everybody's here.
Oh.
Perfect attendance tonight.
She wants to call order tonight.
I will not be at the next meeting first.
Just play by the rules here.
If there is one, in two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, I was saying I will not be at the next meeting in two weeks. Yeah, right? I know. Watch, that's what we're having. That's the sundries.
Okay. Alright, so uh, next item on the agenda is the minutes of our last meeting. I hope everybody had a chance to read the minutes that were prepared for us for March seventeenth. I know, I I read those minutes and I didn't see any need for correction or alteration or addition. Does anybody else wanna uh, offer an observation as to corrections, additions, omissions? I think that is a no. How about a motion to approve them as they were submitted?
Okay.
Move to approve?
In a second.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion in a second to approve the minutes as they were submitted. All in favor say aye please.
Aye.
And those opposed nay?
Shen.
I think I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't here.
Oh.
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry.
Okay, so the the vote then is five to zero to one.
Four to zero to one. Right?
There's a two.
Hi.
Oh, the five, there's six.
Five to zero.
Sorry, I've lost my mind.
Five of.
You wanted to drink coffee tonight, huh?
It's a tea.
Okay.
Yeah, we're all talking over each other.
I needed it.
Moving right along here, uh. The next thing we wanna do is I think everyone, maybe we're maybe not, I don't know. Then on completion of the four uh, text amendment uh, initiatives that we resolved a few weeks ago, we need to sort of do that process again and look at um, what I counted as, I'll just hand it up, it's in front of us. There's actually a total, I believe it's forty recommendations for the zoning commission to lead uh, particular change areas. And uh, we looked at this document, I think it's the same one that we looked at some months ago, and went through an exercise and it led us to the process of identifying the four.
So Mr. Chairman, I did a little shortcut. I did not include the second item that you have in front of you in your Dropbox.
No. This one?
So no, the 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 one that's kinda uh.
Solid evidence.
So that, so that one I have added for you this evening because I I think it helps shortcut just a little bit if that's what you wanted to do.
That's fine.
That 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 one is, that has the full rankings of all the items you ranked at 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 the time last June.
Okay.
Numerically now.
Oh, with June.
You made a check. It was it was June, um, June of twenty twenty-four. So this is, I mean, this is essentially the action item list from the broader forty points. Those forty points also include um, you know, kind of more aspirational stuff. We wanna continue to do this or can you do that? But these items you have in front of you in in this, and I have it on the screen as well, are the action items uh,
Basically.
that you that you already ranked, right? So you accomplished uh, you know, items, you know, one, two, three, four, five in part on the on the first page. And really um, kind of the non-housing ones start with, in fact, I'll just pull it up. I think it might be just easier for me to talk from as well.
Okay.
So I don't know what the what you think is the best way, you know, maybe we could go down and I could provide a a one, you know, a one sentence explainer of of what it might, of what that zone change, zone uh amendment might be or um, or you could just ask me questions. The one thing I wanted to 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 highlight, just it it from the back of your mind, is that the zoning, the full zoning ordinance update, the zoning regulation update uh, that we that we requested funding for through the budget process is now fully funded. Of course, pending pending referendum, but it 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 got through the Board of Selectmen review process as well as the Board of Finance review process. So that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to update the townwide regulations. That does not include really a review of uh, Simsbury Center um, or the or the Hartford-Simsbury Farm Base Code. Is there is, I mean, the the feedback from staff as well as use that, I mean, it's 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 the townwide regulations that that really are a little bit inconsistent and need some work and need some updating. I I think if we chose, if you chose to to take a look at Simsbury Center, I think we could do that in-house. I wouldn't foresee a lot of changes going with that. It's a decent, uh, you know, it's a decent enough ordinance. I think there might be some process stuff we could fix with it, but by and large, I think it works.
Um, for the um rewriting of the or revising the townwide, would that be something that we need to look at and identify? Or is that something that the consultant would be identifying inconsistencies and then like bringing to our attention? Or like, how does that work? Like, how do we work with that consultant?
Yeah, so so I haven't really cut, I haven't come back to that. We didn't come, I haven't really sketched that out yet. That is, that is something that we're gonna wanna do together.
Okay, okay. Yeah, right, okay.
In terms of how to do that, but we would hire a consultant for sure.
Yeah.
Of course, staff has a list of
Yeah.
several hundred items from the from the regulations that we need think to fix or to fix it, do this kind of thing.
Right, right.
But but yeah, we can choose to do a committee.
Be involved in that, but.
We we need to figure out how you want to manage that process.
Okay. Okay.
That's a conversation to have. But I say that not to suggest we should wait to accomplish any of the others things is, once we get into that process, we we certainly would be, we would be more than a year away from July from completing that process. So it's probably an eighteen month process. So I say that all to say that if there are items that you would like to direct attention to for staff to work on in the current list, we should do that. And we 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 shouldn't allow the the full rewrite process to uh to invalidate what you might wanna do because it's, that's gonna take a long time.
Okay. Is this referencing the townwide P O C D dot exercise that we did, just to be clear?
So so Jackie, there um, no, there there are, there are a couple of references to review the center zone. But by and large, it's it's related to the townwide regs.
Okay.
This.
Yes.
This was the exercise that we did as a zoning committee?
But yeah.
Yes.
This was.
For the P O C D.
Just, but no.
Yes.
No.
But it was just us, right? This was the exercise that we as a zoning committee.
Yes.
So we.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, we took the P O C D items and you guys.
So, so people not here know what we're talking about. That was what I was getting at.
No. People who are not here do not know what we're talking about. This was something we did internally. That's what I wanted to.
I think she's saying kind of a corium, yeah, I'm just.
That had to be a June meeting.
I think we we did it publicly at a meeting.
It was pub, yeah, it was public.
They would, they would have to reference that meeting and know what's going.
Right, it was public, right, it's it's.
Yeah, so so.
That was my point of bringing it up shortly.
So this, this body went through a prioritization process of taking the P O C recommended action items for the zoning commission
Yes.
and uh essentially ranked numerically pri- prior, uh top priorities. So now, this list is back to you because you've essentially checked off the first four, give or take.
I have a quick question. Um, so in the, you know, the process of doing the revision through the um, the third party, would things like the adopt electric vehicle infrastructure that conform with state code, would that be something that they consider? Or is that something we should potentially be looking at doing now?
So that's, I mean, I think that's what, I I think that's, I think that's the discussion for you to have, whether you think that's a pri- priority or not. But yeah, that, I mean, we would certainly list that as an item to fix in the full process.
But it 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 would be something that if, that would be considered in that process?
Yes, it would. I think, I think the things that we don't get to as a group will be, would be included in that process.
If you'd like to, uh, I'm I'm interested in your initial suggestion about going down these and doing sort of.
Okay, and I can do a fair fairly quickly.
So let's do, let's start, um, we're gonna start with ridgeline regulations and then and then just go down the list. Cause uh, we accomplished the stuff above the ridgeline regulations. So ridgeline regulations, so today we have a, we have a policy in the P O C D to visually protect the ridgeline. This would, this would be, this would develop standards, zoning standards that would um, that have, that would that would act to protect the ridgeline by buffer or by height or by distance. Um, again, I don't, I don't have the solution to tonight, but so it would be regulations that would act to require protections of the ridgeline. And that would be both, you know, you know, on the eastern side as well as the western side, yeah.
My recollection is it was, at least my feeling, strong feeling at the time, last spring, last winter, that we need to be a little more bold about the view shed that we're talking about. It's not just the tip, the ridge.
Yeah.
It's the view shed.
Sure.
Front of it, so yeah, okay.
Sure.
I agree. Yeah, I would agree, absolutely.
Sure.
That's a priority we've heard from residents.
Sure. Sure, yeah, 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 certainly. So uh uh, so to uh incorporate dark sky principles, essentially lighting standards into your zoning regulations. We don't have lighting standards in our zoning regs today.
Mm-hmm.
We, we review lighting as part of a site plan process as part and as part of design review uh that is, that is most mostly negotiated and mostly best practiced, but we don't have standards. The Conservation Commission is actually working on standards today. So I I would suggest that you 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 don't prioritize them because Brittany and Marjorie, the 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 chairperson of Conservation Commission are are going to bring you recommendations, dra- a full draft of dark sky provisions from the Conservation Commission.
We can make it a priority, but say that Conservation is doing the work.
But, yeah, of course. So just let you know it's coming.
What's the timeline on that? Should be May, I would say. Early May.
We we had hoped quicker, but they they are a little jammed up with the McLean application.
It's fine. Yeah, I understand.
That has taken a lot of their activity, but it's really close to being ready to come to you.
They spread the seed a little bit quicker. Okay, great, thank you.
I will look forward to that.
Staff has always, has continued to recommend revising our zoning map to remove or to address what we call kind of non-conforming zoning districts. You know, we've got mapped districts that no longer appear in your regulations. And so when we get calls from from realtors or from mortgage lenders, you know, asking us, I don't see what the setbacks are, I don't, for the um, residential development district, there's an apartment district that were removed from from your regulations, you you know, a decade ago or longer than that. Um, but we still have the mapping, so it creates a little bit of confusion. So we should either map those properties a legal conforming district or recreate regulations for those districts. Staff think that's one to, that helps clear up real confusion in this area. We've made two recommendations and and this body has worked on sign regulations and fits and starts um since well before I got here. And so we have, we we kind of broke, we 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 make two recommendations to you on signs, which is one, the most difficult sign issues that we deal with are almost always related to temporary signs. Either either political signs or yard signs or
Apron.
temporary signs, um, as you you, one could break that out of a of a full sign rewrite. You could just work on the temporary signs, cause they cause us the most headaches. And we get the most complaints and the most concerns and the most, all those kinds of things. We should build a better framework that we can all agree to in the community, in my opinion.
Good point. I had a phone call in the last few days from a very upset resident who's, you know, it's, it has to do with um, well down, it's what is the definition of a sign? If everything that you might put on a building that's written in the English language, is that a regulated issue of signage? It doesn't matter if it's, does it have to be related to the business or not related to the business? If you have a building and you put up something that people can read, is that subject to regulation? Whether it has anything to do with the business or not? I think we should be clear.
Sometimes is the answer.
That's
Yeah.
that's not gonna help us in the future.
Typically, commercial speech
Yeah.
as it relates to the building, to the business, is absolutely subject to our standards. It gets gray when it's not commercial speech, when it is protected uh by the First Amendment or otherwise is innocuous to the, to the business.
Is commercial speech not protected by the First Amendment?
So 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 it is, but it can be, it can be, right, yes. So the answer is yes, that's one of the issues that we that we are challenged with. You, I mean, you can, we can uh, regulate non-commercial speech with time, manner, place, you know, it can be this size, it can be this, but we don't actually in our, in our regulations today. And that's one of the missing loopholes.
Well, we might get some advice on it from a consultant on the common practice in the area these days that we really.
Yes, there there are.
Yeah, it's like, I know, like Burlington, Vermont has like a bunch of rules on that. And some places have nothing, you know.
I remember when, what a Tariffill resident Tommy Mitchell put a sign up on a tree at the top of Route three fifteen. It insulted President Obama. And I remember being informed by the person who had your role at the time that the town attorney said that's uh, that's uh, protected by the First Amendment. We can't do anything about it. And it stayed there until Tommy decided he was gonna take it down, is my recollection. But the point is just that it's an area of some concern.
Sure. And so I would just, I would just, just to talk about that issue, I would, my experience, you know, planning for a long time is that you can't regulate the message, but you you could have a rule that says you can't put it on a tree.
So, I mean, you can't.
Right, so it's, again, it's a time, place, manner requirement.
Yeah, you can't regulate.
The message we can't mess with, but you can, you know, you you can, you can.
Perfanity or something like that, and that, like, not that I'm advocating for that.
Yeah, so of course, it allows for some of that, but but temporary signs are 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 a big issue.
There's some stuff there. Yeah.
And flags. We get a lot of calls about different, like, business flags or advertising because it also ties into the sign. So if it says, yeah.
Gives a flag a sign, like.
Like open, like.
Yeah, and and then you can't have those, like, the car dealership type of.
Yeah, a flag is a sign. Definitely not.
You know what I mean? Yeah, so there's, there's all this.
Definitely not. And and remember, your sta- staff's gotta make a call on these things, like, you know, if.
Yeah.
We have, we have allowed, whether whether it's supported by the ordinance or not, the regulation, we've allowed open signs and we've not called those. We have not applied them or required a permit.
If they, and if they come down too.
Say that.
The open signs, if they come down.
Yeah, they come in, they come out, but yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So anyway, I I, we should, we should work on temporary signs.
I think that's why this always takes us so long.
It does, because we'll start all day long, right?
Yep.
And then, you know, and it's.
We should work on.
As I always say, you know, I've never.
Yeah.
It's important.
Um, I've never been in a, I mean, this community is is as active and advocate of a community as I've ever been in, so as I always say, if you think I'm going after the Babe Ruth folks to tell them to take the registration signs nap down, you need another planning director. I'm really not gonna do that, I mean.
So was somebody taking the signs down? Cause I was hearing all about, like, signs getting taken down from around town, like baseball sign-up signs and like.
So so so, so DOT takes them down sometimes, DOT takes them on down our own, but
Yep, yes, okay. Oh, no.
Um, if staff does it, we're gonna have to talk to somebody from the Babe Ruth League before we do that.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
We are.
There was a lot of chatter.
I mean, those, I mean, that's for real politics.
Right, there was a lot of chatter going on, I'm like.
We know that.
Yeah.
We gotta do a meeting.
You don't think anyone's stealing the signs?
You know, we're not taking the signs down for the
Yeah, that's.
high school play, we're, we're not doing it. Let them out, we're not gonna touch them.
But only for certain.
But you're right, we we spend days, days talking about.
And they're not.
Okay, now, right.
That's, yeah.
Okay. So the, so um, Josh uh uh mentioned the electric vehicle thing again, that's, we we try to monitor when state statute changes there, the adopted estate statute that says you, you have to provide for infrastructure for um, for electric vehicles. Those are the kind of things we should also have in our zoning regs, so it, so it's clear to developers all in one place.
We did un vessel, un vessel, that's part of it.
Yeah, you, so you negotiated that, right?
Yeah.
As part of it, but um, if it was in the zoning reg, that in the parking section of the zoning regs,
they would know.
then it would be clear and everybody would know, we wouldn't have to tell anybody again.
How prescriptive is that state code?
How prescriptive is it?
Yeah, like.
It's a requirement, it's a requirement on.
Right, but did they say how, or they just say you have to do it?
Yeah, they do, they say that.
One?
It's it's really just infrastructure, so you have to have just essentially the conduit serving
Good.
X number of spaces on a parking lot that's over thirty.
Is that as simple as just Ctrl C, Ctrl V, like?
It it could be, yes. I've I've looked into it a fair bit, cause I, I have an interest in electric cars. So it 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 could be as simple pretty much as copy paste.
Yeah.
Unless we decide we wanna be more strict than state laws.
Yeah.
Can't, can't we be, can't we not be more strict than state laws or we can't be more permissive? What is the?
I don't think we can be more permissive.
We can buy, we cannot be more permissive, we can be stricter upon adoption of a regulation.
We can be more permissive.
Well, we're not a C L A.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay, moving right on. This rate will be home by the second half.
Yeah, I know. So we had a um, so so residential home adaptive reuse in commercial corridors. And it's really going, so right now, we have, we have, we um,
Right now.
I I think we ought to consider how we deal with older houses in our commercial corridors. And it's actually, it kind of has been going both ways. We get some calls about how do I convert this all to commercial, or how can I do half residential and half commercial? Now we're, we're getting calls because of the, you know, the challenge of retail and office space and the demand. Folks saying, well, I I can I take this back all the way to residential? Um, I I think there are kind of, there are opportunities to to address that in some places. Maybe by special permit or special exception, if you looked at at a specific location where it made sense to allow some residential to go essentially at a hundred percent. It is a, it is a, it is a challenge and we get lots of questions about it.
I would wanna look at that specific to the zone, because some of them will make sense, some do not.
Yeah, so broadly, I mean, I think this, when it came out of the P O C D, it was essentially in business zones.
On hotbed o.
Today, what do you do with a house that's in a business zone? And right now, because we don't, we don't allow residential in our B one or B two or B three, except by a s- a small percentage, forty percent.
Forty percent.
And it's, and it's, and it's challenging and it's, it's a very, it's a little bit convoluted how we allow it.
But everyone owns a property who's unsatisfied with the limitations of the zone they're in is free to approach us with a text amendment.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yes.
Everyone, no matter what zone.
That's.
Absolutely true, on on anything.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't necessarily have to have alternatives to the nth degree on how they might approach your property or concern about it.
So.
I agree.
Okay.
Staff had recommended, um, we are on a adopt a land disturbance E N S, erosion and sediment control requirement based on the minimum acreage or disturbance. We have, uh, over the years, we 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 get, we get a lot of complaints about large lot, particularly lo- uh, large single-family houses on a half an acre or even, or more or even less, uh, where there aren't stormwater requirements or, excuse me, there aren't erosion and sediment control requirements. And those lots are moving over an acre of dirt and it's spilling into our storm systems and onto neighbors' property and into the street. Um, it, that's probably not really a heavy lift. Um, I've I've written one before in other places.
This would cover the neighbor that takes down fifty trees too, right?
It could, absolutely, it absolutely could, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Get that too.
So, so it's kind of a, it's a land disturbance regulation more than it is an erosion and sediment control. So yeah, we would build into that. So that's what that, that's what that would look like. Uh, public notice requirements is actually, you can cross that off, we did, we uh, we accomplished that as a group um last year. So the P O C D recommended a review of whether the 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 our, what we call our most flexible zoning district, that the planned area development district, whether that was serving the community well or whether we would prefer to do what's called the planned development district. And they are different under the state statutes. So if you you think about our, um, a planned development district, it usually is a um, it's kind of a negotiated zoning district. You know, it it kind of names its own uses, it names its own thing, requires a process and, you know, both a legislative process rezone and then a site plan process. So that's what that would do there. We've, we've heard concerns about our pad district that it really only applies, you can only put a pad on top of an industrial or commercial property zone today. Um, and that, and that it can be restrictive and we have, you know, we haven't seen that much use of it. I think it's a good idea to take a look at that and staff would be happy to do that. Um, there are some benefits to a more flexible P D D zone that other, other towns use.
Well, it was developed in in lieu of a mixed-use zone.
Yeah, yeah, and usually it acts as a mixed-use zone, right, that's exactly right.
Do you have an extra um, packet of that?
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I might not actually.
I'm all lost. Are you lost?
Um, um, yes, very.
Oh, hi, there was.
We should've, yeah, I do have it on the computer too, remember?
Oh, okay, great.
There we go. All right, let's keep going here.
Are we? We view the.
Yeah, you know, um, I mean, I would, I would recommend not reviewing the Hartford, um,
No, she's, not right now.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Those are the form base code for Hartford South right now.
Yeah.
But I, but I do think um, there might be an occasion to do that once we get through the, you know, the appellate process as to whether those rules and regulations are, you know, serve the community or are what you want to see. They they um, they may or may not be, but it they, uh, again, this is, this is a recommendation that is not a new recommendation. It it does come out of the P O C D, it was a recommendation um, in the, out of the P O C D, so it was, it was, it was adopted before our appellate process.
I'm gonna have a question on that. Wouldn't that be a subset of the full zoning regulation rewrite and review?
No. It 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 could be, I mean, it it could be, you know, the problem is, is that um, the rewriting, the the answer is yes. Yes, it could be, it's, well, it could be.
Good job, Tony.
Sorry, Tony.
Thank you.
I don't know why I was making a meal of that, sorry. P O C D recommends a requirement for fiscal impact studies and school impact studies for, it says certain projects for complex projects. We typically get them when we have a complex project. We, you know, staff asks or the, the commission asks a developer to provide a fis- fiscal impact study, but it is not a requirement of our, of our site plan or our submission process.
They don't always. Good.
There, so there's no requirement and there could, there could be, if 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 you still wanted to.
I'm just wondering, is this something that we would want to have a, some sort of a thing that would trigger the town
Yes.
actually doing a fiscal, finance, whatever, the F I S, whatever the heck that is, um, impact study? Um, because oftentimes the, you know, for the larger projects, the developer provides it. And as we all know, anybody can provide any numbers that support any theory at this point. So um, I I just wonder if for, if we wanna set triggers that if it's a development of X size that the town actually provides our own.
So we have a built-in process that that does allow the commission to direct a third-party review of a submit, of any submitted study, quite frankly. It's gotta be a complex project, it has to, has to meet cer- certain levels.
Okay. But it feels like that's in kind of conflict with the amount of time that we have to actually approve something to then put out a um, to put out like an R F P for getting a consultant to do it and then getting the uh, the other, they have to pay for it, but then, like, it just seems like a lot, like, you have to really trigger that, like, the day you hear about it.
Yeah, well. You gotta do it the day, the day it's submitted.
Not when you feel like there's a concern, so that's.
You do. We just need to be more cognizant of it, but I don't, I, I don't know that the zoning commission can, can, can adopt a a regulation that requires the town or town staff to do anything, I don't, I don't know.
So, yeah.
I don't know that that's in your purview necessarily.
Okay, I I mean, I guess maybe I'm not wording it properly, but it just, I do think that there are certain projects
Yeah.
that in hindsight, we're like, why aren't we doing this? You know, I feel like if we saw that there was a project that was of a certain width and breadth or whatever the
Yeah.
the the guidelines we determine, we could say, all right, this is something where, okay, let's discuss
Yeah.
actually getting this, this done and and like, like she said, you know, something sooner rather than later.
Sure.
That's something we just have to do, like, we are allowed to do that, but it just, we're never.
Yes, yes. Okay, so maybe that's it, we're.
Like, we need to pay more, I think, like, just pay more attention to, like, maybe we wanna identify for our own use, like, a kind of a guideline for when we think that would be something that we should just automatically request, cause you basically have to request it before you know you have, you're even unsure about it.
Well, that, that's what we could do if we put a priority on this.
Yeah.
If we don't put a priority on it, we're not gonna work on it.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, great.
Maybe next year.
I, my, my concern with that is the cost.
The developer has to pay for that.
So u- usually the way it works though, I mean, you you usually the way, the the, the way it's written today,[1788.44] it it's essentially becomes a third-party review. It's the the, a a third-party reviewer isn't creating their own new fiscal impact study. They are examining the submitted impact study of the developer and identifying flaws, concerns, outstanding issues.
Oh. Okay.
If, you know, the, et cetera.
Do they talk to our board of ed and our board of finance to confirm what the developer put forward?
So that that's, that's what would happen.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, that is what would happen. Now, so I I, so take the example of, um, take Hartford South. I I don't, I I don't think this, these are any of the, of the, of the items that are particularly, uh, on appeal.
Sure.
Their submission was given to board of ed, town finance staff, public works. And they did provide comment. Um, that was was one of the ma- was the main issues of kind of the review process with the school district was was, um, was not aligned with the developers estimated of student costs, for instance. So, so, yeah, so there was a check and balance on that.
Sure.
So I realized, like, we needed to select this to continue the discussion, but just real quick. So is it something where we could, like, put out an R F P to, like, almost not retain somebody, but have people that we already know and they've already given us, like, like, it's, like, kind of pre
Yes.
pre-select people so that when we know there's a big project, instead of having to start the process during that six-week window, we already have somebody that we know is gonna give us
Right.
Right.
a fair price and we don't have to then go out to that process in the middle of the rest of the process. We can just reach out and say, we're ready, we need you. Thank you for your previous submission. We've already select, like, shortlisted.
A known contractor.
Yeah, it's it's, yeah, engineering has an on-call process for for, it's, that's how it would be. We could certainly do that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's probably
Certainly, there's certainly an avenue to do that.
Of stage to do.
Right, yeah, cause it takes just too much time.
Like, it's the applications in front of us, that's not fair.
Right. Yeah, agreed.
I mean, it's doable if you understand from day one you're going to do it, but it puts the stress associated with the time.
Yeah. Sure, there is. But I'm glad that we're having that discussion, like, that we just had that discussion, cause I think we needed to sort that out.
Yeah.
And I.
I don't know if we sorted much out, but the one thing that you have to know is the developer has to pay for that, is the complaint.
Well, I mean. Right. Yes, of course.
It sounds to me like we've heard reports at the charter revision commission that they're complaining already and they're going elsewhere. I'm not particularly troubled by that. I think it's unfortunate if it's true. I don't know if it is. But there any significant change that we make is, I'm I'm not raising something new here. Change is tough sometimes.
Yeah.
And this is one that's gonna be, that will be difficult. If we opt to go full requirement that, you know, puts a burden on the developer, applies for, you know, a project that's significant enough in our eyes to require um, impact statements, but I I don't think it's unreasonable. What I'm interested in is what percentage of other communities are wearing that now? And maybe we should've been doing it a decade ago and we never did, for different reasons. Maybe that was it.
What?
It adds a burden on the developer. I don't know, but we can put a priority on it and we'll see it in our workplaces.
Would our way be more expensive than them hiring their own? I mean, if they were going, if they were going to, well, they shouldn't do it, they shouldn't do their own if they're, if we're just gonna do it.
It's on top of their own.
No, that's what I'm saying, is that the way, the way it's currently, the way we currently
They pass it on to me.
Yeah.
deal with what we would call complex projects.
Right.
Right? So let's, let's say, we 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 use it should use it more within the well as in fact, cause we don't, you know, we don't always have soil scientists on on duty, those kinds of things. But again, it's, it's, it's a check on the work. It's not a, it's not a recreation or a so, a traffic study might be a better example.
Mm-hmm.
We might pay a traffic expert to review the applicant's traffic study. That expert's not doing a new traffic study to the tune of sixty thousand dollars.
Sure.
They're gonna, we're gonna spend, the applicant is gonna spend eight thousand dollars for for us to select a third-party reviewer to review the work and the data and the assumptions.
And it's, they couldn't just pay for us to do one, essentially, a a study ourselves. In in lieu of their study.
But they're still then, if the money's coming from them, I'm not sure how they'll have checked.
No.
What I'm saying is like, why why do you choose
No. I mean, yeah.
It's a check on theirs.
I I feel like they're they're paying to do the study and then paying to have someone check the study.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As opposed to why not just have a
Why not just have them pay us to do the study? Is that, is that logistically impossible or?
You know. Have someone that we trust. It's logistically impossible.
Okay, well, that would answer that.
That's why not.
Okay, fair enough.
Got it. And and I mean, I mean, I I don't know that s- that 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 staff is as gilded on applicant expertise as perhaps some elected bodies and officials are. Um, you know, we we tend, you know, we 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 deal with these professionals quite often. These folks have degrees and have en- you know, engineering bona fides. They're 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 not, I mean.
Yeah.
You're saying they're fair, like, there's, there's.
There may be, there may be some license always in favor of the applicant and but that's where that third-party reviewer gets to say, well, hold it, that assumption's not right.
Yeah.
But I I don't think it requires an independent creation of a traffic study.
But also, I think, you know, and and past experiences would tell me, sometimes, you know, it'll give the 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 town
Yeah, I agree.
a little bit of peace of mind, because, you know, you do tend to go, oh, well, they brought in their own people.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
You know, so you can say, well, we we did checks on that.
Yeah.
I think that's right.
So good.
So, you know, even if in fact their study is a hundred percent accurate, at least we can say, we we verified that.
I mean.
Yes.
You know, so we did some due diligence on our part.
And that came up at the library, sorry, with in the public hearings, a couple of the big ones. And so it's great to just say, here's the data. It has been done.
Yeah. Right, sure.
Well, to
Yeah.
to be clear, people are going to say, uh, so long as the data is not something they'd like, so long as the result is not something they like, they are going to say that there is something wrong with the process. I I would be pretty surprised if even if we did our own independent investigation into whatever was done to, whatever study was done, but that's not going to change public opinion. But beyond, a couple people.
No, but that is, we can say that it's.
At least we can say that we did our part, but anyways.
Yeah, right, fa- facts and data are important.
That's, yeah.
We're 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 chasing, we're
Your decision-making process.
We're chasing a a goal that will just be moved, let's be honest.
I think we are honest most of the time.
I agree. Well, that's that's what I think.
I'm talking. Yeah, I mean, though.
So.
What?
Yeah, I guess not.
Scary.
No, she's absent today.
No.
At conflicting meeting this evening.
So we talked about the full, the full zoning regulation rewrite, um, after that, revisit the food truck regulations. Um, I I, you know, staff has no interest in that.
You don't wanna get beat up somewhere.
I mean, if you want, if you wanna weigh our opinion on that, we're not interested in what it is.
I think we have bigger fish to fry.
I agree.
Yeah.
Longest of fish I've ever tried.
So we, you know, the the P O C D.
But that's, this might be a surprise.
Then you won't be frightened of them.
No.
The P O C D recommended a review of the Meadowwood rezone.
Yes.
Because it's zoned.
I definitely think that's important.
Whatever it's zoned, it's zoned strange.
I agree, yeah.
Uh, housing.
And we, we're saying we want that.
You know, we, you know, we've created a housing code for it and obviously it doesn't exist, so.
Right.
I mean, obviously, this, it, we should probably have a conversation with the board of selectmen first
Sure.
uh, about their interest in that, but, um, I I don't, I don't, I don't know what you would do at this time besides have a conversation with 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 the board of selectmen. You can't rezone their property right now. I mean, we we should have, we should.
No, but I think we could have a conversation and coming out of all of the housing discussions we've had and how it seems that the board of selectmen has said we wanna have housing, so what do we want to do?
Perfect.
And how does this play into the priorities?
The, so the the, I think the easiest way to say it is currently the way the property is zoned, it was zoned for a a a, you know, a a multi-hundred unit
Development.
development with affordable units, so it is, it is not prepared to
Yep.
to take any other type of development or open space or anything. It just, it's not, it's not suited to its current zone, no matter what happens on that property forever.
Do you get builders, developers that ask about that property?
No, 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 I mean.
Why are they not?
Cause the town owns the property outright, right? It's a town-owned land and and it's overwhelmingly, you know, restricted open space, except for, I think, twenty-four acres.
Well, except for the part that we said.
Except for that that part, and that's kind of free and clear of of ta- um, you know, the town, the town can do town uses on it or however we decide what to do, but no, we don't get questions about that property.
Well, we should talk about that then.
Yeah.
Right.
Wait. Say that again? So the twenty-four acres that is not owned by the town?
That is owned by.
Or is owned by.
Yeah, but it's so, so Shannon, that that twenty-four acres that you've talked about at at Shipack is, that that's what I'm talking about. That cur- that that piece was is, was always
Yeah, 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 yeah. Right.
carved out and unencumbered compared to the rest of the property. The rest of the property has open space designations essentially.
Right.
Correct.
The the town open space, like.
Yes.
So that could be, that could, you said something about for town use.
Yeah, the twenty-four acres, as I said, are unencumbered, so that could be a town use, it could be a private use. The town could sell it, it's not, you could put a
Oh, I see.
Okay.
a community center there, you could put housing there, you could put a park there, you could put ball fields there, uh, however the town decides to to use that property is is, the the, it's it's a blank slate, I guess, is easier way to say it.
Okay. We said when we purchased it.
Right.
There's, that one part is usable where the others are only for recreation or open space.
Correct.
At some point, we should rezone that property. It's into a more appropriate zone, whether it's open space or, I don't know what it is, but.
Sure.
All right, that's. That's what I was kind of coming back around to, so, good talk.
Sure. Yeah. So, uh, so there's another staff, this is another staff, it kind of comes out of staff and not really out of the P O C that we, um, you know, have in in addition to, uh, temporary signs, we, um, we struggle a lot with questions from homeowners about accessory structures on their property. Where they can go, where can I put the L P tank? Where can I put the, you know, the shed and the, and so there's confusion and some of the conflicts and it, we we should, we should take a different approach to how we, how we permit those smaller uses on individual property.
And that's with us, not Z B A?
No, so that comes out of the zoning reg where we s- where we say the 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 L P tank has to be here. It, so it's in your zoning regs.
They're all considered accessory structures. That's why it's from zoning.
And that's puzzling. Haven't been there in one of these recently, that L P tanks, for instance
Right.
are called structures.
Yeah, brushe tanks.
Yeah.
Take some of the fun out of this. But if everybody's not on the same wavelength, how am I interpreting stuff?
Right.
You're talking about propane tanks?
For instance, for instance, propane tanks, but propane tanks and sheds and, you know, shed, if you have a shed that's less than two hundred and fifty square feet, you can go five feet from the property line, but if it's two hundred and fifty-one feet, it's gotta meet the primary setbacks, so there's, all of those things conspire to make it complicated for property owners. The P O C D also recommended a review of how we deal with home-based business, you know, our home occupations. Um.
Have we had any issues with that post-convent?
One.
Oh, yeah, we need an update there.
You have that one as a group, um.
That was a, under it.
It does get elevated to you if it's.
With a trailer.
That was an amazing.
So what are the, what are the challenges that we, or the complaints or the concerns? I'm not quite sure, so.
The, there's two types of home-based businesses you can have. And one, the the complaint has been one that has delivery of goods on it temporarily that come and go.
Oh, wow. Yeah, we know that one.
Um, that's the one, yeah, that I think is, is more looked at. Um, and there's not clear language about those types of thresholds in our home-based business regulations. It could be better, definitely better written and more clear about what's allowed.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I hear you.
Full, uh, sign regulation rewrite and review are, seems very center code. That's it? That's all?
So how do we fix?
You know, I did dot exercise last time.
So we have a couple suggestions. One is, um, I think it would be helpful if we could determine how much effort is required to do each of these, cause I know with respect to the affordable housing, we had, what, three public hearings, we had a couple of long commission, uh, here, uh, regular meetings just to discuss it, so I don't think there's many of these that would require that level of effort, but I think that that would be helpful, maybe breaking that into three categories. Maybe easy, medium, hard in terms of effort required both by staff and the commission. Um, the second is, I'd be interested in you as the resident expert as to which of these staff believes are most important and should take priority. Yeah, I mean, you don't need to answer that this evening, but, uh, I think that should be part of, part of how we approach this.
Okay. I agree with that. Shouldn't certainly do that.
I wonder if we do, I know that, um, at work sometimes we'll use FigJam, but basically you can do like a little board where you do your little sticky notes and you can, you know, so everybody gets their sticky notes and you can kind of put yours into your categories and then we can see how many, how often we align and then kind of discuss places where there is not alignment, you know, so we might be able to do sort of like your dot exercise, only this time maybe just doing it that way, where everybody.
What word did you say?
Oh, well, we use a a tool called FigJam, but basically, you know, so we can just do it online, but we
But it's electronic.
Yeah, 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 but I mean, we could just do it with a sticky notes and a board and just do it that way, but, you know, it might be a good exercise.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, cause we may find that we're all on board with like ridgeline regulations, so that's a easy call, you know, but, yeah, so, yeah.
Right, right. Right. And that's easy. Yep.
I I actually, I I have one question and it's, I think it might've been in the P O C D somewhere, if I remember correctly, but it's not on this. And it's the state-owned property, um, in the downtown.
Yep.
Um, and I it, I think it's worth us discussing, cause I don't even really know what our slate of options with that property is. Um, I, it's definitely been mentioned in the P O C D.
It has.
Um, but I don't even, I I'd have to take a look at what exactly the recommendations are, but it's, it's not on this one and I think it probably should be. Uh, I think that's a huge plot of language. It's very complicated, very labor-intensive for sure.
Yeah, so, so I. So what I didn't do, Tucker, um,
That's what I'm hearing, yes.
I didn't include items from the, from, from the entire recommendation
Yeah.
sheets that were I didn't include items that weren't specific to zoning changes.
Right.
Right? The, so 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 the item you're identifying is that, you know, the parcels that are, they're owned by the state department of transportation that are, that's on, it's on Iron Horse. Uh, you know, on the bottom side of down from Hot Meadow, but on the north, or the, but I guess it's the west side of Iron Horse that, you know, has been used for, uh, in part a commuter lot and has been, you know, it's underdeveloped. So there's a, the P O C D says that we should effort, you know, should we make effort to redevelop, you know, to identify purchase and redevelop. So I didn't include those more process-related efforts in the, in i- in that, um. I I I don't know, um, I mean, the town has been in in conversation with members of state government about those parcels and how to, um, how to pave the path forward.
Okay.
I don't.
And there's nothing we could do to like, I don't know, it 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 basically lay out a framework of what zoning might look like, were it to be, it it, that just has to wait until.
I think it just has to wait. I think it does.
Has to wait.
Yeah, I think, there are, there are some major restrictions there. There's some conduit.
There are major complications associated with the property, um.
Yeah, there's some things there, Tucker. Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's not an easy process.
It's not easy.
Yeah.
Yeah, the state doesn't give away ground
Well.
easily and there may be some, uh,
That's protect, that's very much protected.
I'm very.
Some burdens, uh, on the ground. It may not be as clean as perhaps we would like it to be.
Right.
So there's some, some deal points that we haven't gotten through.
But there's, there's other
Yeah.
There's other state-owned land in Simsbury, it's not just those commuter parks.
Yeah, the P O C D just identified that ground specifically, you know, as part of our downtown development.
It's in our downtown.
And it's vacant, it's grounded in the downtown, totally, that's.
And it's vacant. Yeah. That, the only reason I brought it, cause that that obviously would be a, a a massive lift, um, to to do anything with that. It just.
Yeah.
That's why it's outside of the scope of the law.
Right, I don't.
It probably, it probably is, it probably is. I mean, we've got, you know, it's it's got, it's got, it's got
It's It's personally a benefit.
center zone attached to it, so it has
Bruce is like, this is not.
It has a regulatory environment associated with it as part of the center zone.
Thanks, Tucker, for taking us sideways.
It's it, I, it's, seeing that
That's a good.
How that works out for you, Tucker.
Waste of space. Personally a benefit.
It's, it's an important piece of ground. I think we all know that.
Sorry.
Okay, any other questions? Cause I'll, cause I, cause for your next meeting, I'll just have, I will literally have to all that organized for you.
Have that go for you.
Cool.
Okay.
Excellent.
And you're gonna try to give them what? One suggestion as to what the staff for
Yeah, yes, I can.
Yeah. I think that would, it's, it's always helpful, um, because we're not always on this thing.
Thanks. Thank you for this.
Yeah.
And we may, you know, staff may just say, you know what, on these three items, we're just gonna do them.
Cool.
We'll bring them to you and you, and just as, and as the applicant, we'll just bring them to you.
Yeah.
When Tucker was suggesting a tiering approach to, you know, consider the effort. But some of these just require a good draft.
Of course, Tony.
A draft, and we know, we're gonna sit here for hours thinking up the wording to put in.
No, no, I think that's our job. That's, that's our job.
That's a, yeah, that could kick it off.
Not yours.
And make it.
Yeah.
But I thought that about some of the stuff we just did, the, the quitirin, it wasn't.
And even if it's not something that we're gonna do, like the dark sky lighting, please just put it in, it's being done by conservation, but it still could be something that we prioritize.
Shh, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
We, they're, they're working on it, but they don't write the zoning regulations over there, so beware.
Aware.
So, 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 yeah, I mean, de- de- so for anything and not just the dark sky, so the 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 devil's in the details, and so that will be your job to kind of work through that and and work through what those thresholds are and who they apply to, that's, yeah, that's your job.
If we had enough time.
Thank you.
If we had enough time for this.
I I'm I'm, we, I love this, I I, we, this is helps keep us moving, I love
So much fun.
This is the best, this is the best part of it.
Do you have an update?
Really have an update, I know, um
Can I ask you a question?
I can take, I can take free, freewheeling questions if you want.
Cambridge Crossing.
Yeah.
New owner. Is the landscape plan going to be done?
So town staff has not, uh, been in contact with the new lien holder and mortgage holder, so it's not the new owner yet.
Okay. Okay.
So that, um, we understand that a a company called Stella Development has, has the bank has 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 sold those rights to a developer, so that developer's responsibility will be to continue the foreclosure process uh, through the courts. I expect when they're ready, we will need to have, and they will want to come to you to talk about uh, challenges associated with completing that subdivision.
A lot of interest from residents and even from neighbors, neighboring street, of having that landscape plan completed, just, you know, beside the infrastructure, obviously, but the landscape plan, it's just, it's really tough.
Yeah, so when we come to you, I I I think that the developer will come to you asking, you know,
Okay.
you you say, we 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 certainly want that that development built out, that landscaping plan is burdensome.
Yeah.
It was originally burdensome on the owner, it's
Yeah.
it's probably overplanted, quite frankly, but but you'll have to figure that out.
Okay. But something, yeah.
Uh, but they'll be in, I suspect, having a conversation about how to best complete that project.
That would be great. That would be great.
And I'll bring them to you when we're ready.
Thank you.
The concern is about the subdivision, what is that, the unbuilt but approved apartments? Or the whole place?
So, so it's, so right now, it's, you know, it's, it's just a bit, it's just a little bit under fifty percent built out, there's thirty-four homes.
Of the approved, fifty percent are built, is how it is.
That's correct, a little less than fifty percent, there's seventy-nine units, there's thirty-four built, so it's less than.
But the ones that are built and occupied are all windows.
No, no, they're
No, those are purchased.
No, they're all, well, they're all, they're all feasible for purpose, there may be renters in
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, I was thinking of talking about
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there may be renters in them, but they are owned, they, I mean, they're 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 not rental units.
They go
And there's affordable there.
Four.
There should be thirty percent, right?
No, twenty percent, because it was built under the old workforce housing requirement, so I think that there are sixteen total approved and only four built to date.
Which is not half for the half that are
Yeah, the developer didn't build it according to the scheduling and
So it didn't do it in those ways, right? Yeah. Okay.
What a
Could
Oh, sorry.
No, you go ahead.
But any, any word on Wagner Ford?
That's
So I would, I I I expect that that property is going to be a little bit delayed in that they have applied for almost a million-dollar brownfield grant from the state in order, uh, to to, um to reclimate the 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 soils, the toxic soils.
Did that, was there, I don't remember that, I knew that soil was suspect, but I don't remember that as part of the original piece being, I I don't remember that needing brownfield.
Yeah, absolutely, it's absolutely, uh, it's absolutely a site, yeah, it's a it's an identified site.
Oh, yeah.
That's always
Yeah.
Where we're Wait, do you know that timeline, like, is that like a lot?
So they just, the the, it just applied, the 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 application date, because it required town signature as a partner, in fact, so, um
Yeah.
Fe- February first was the day, I don't think it awards till end of the summer time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the other one is, is that for us, the red the, what is this red envelope, is that for us?
Isn't that where all these things go in?